It doesn't matter. I started, I came home at four to get ahead of traffic, opened up my laptop and bam.
They had their [inaudible 00:01:18].
Thirty seconds.
Good for you.
Two.
Two?
Yeah. And then get Roy some of these. Well, he may want some of those too. Get four of those and four of the others. And then whatever you want.
That'd be ten. Is that it? So, two and two fish. Do you want any?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting of the Whitehall City Council to order for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it for March 20, 2018. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Elmore?
Here.
Coniston?
Here.
Hannah?
Here.
Heck?
Here.
Here.
President Green?
Present. All right, our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for March 6, 2018, Agenda and Regular Meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 6 minutes.
Second. A motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Cantor for approval of the March 6 Agenda and Regular Meeting minutes. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
All right, the rules have been approved.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the 2018-2019 Rules and Procedures for City Council.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Do you want me to repeat it?
That's all right. I'm going to repeat it anyway. You'll hear me.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Heck and a second by Ms. Elmore to approve the 2018-2019 Rules and Procedures for City Council. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules and procedures for 2018-2019 have been approved. Next, we have our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Gerald Dixon, 3877 Doni Street. Two weeks ago, I spoke about the mayor's revisions to ordinance 745. And I talked about a couple of different things that I came up with just as a regular citizen considering her revisions in the ordinance. Some things I used critical thinking to come up with, that I shared with you, my representatives. The only thing that I got that night from anyone was, "Thank you for commenting." But no one spoke to me about my legitimate concerns, what I feel are my legitimate concerns, which include constitutional issues. So, given that then, I sent a letter to every one of you through the clerk of council, Ms. Frymark, and she told me that she distributed it to you. I have not heard from any of you on that. And I just find it wrong for you to ignore me in my concerns about legislation. I feel that you're going to just rubber stamp. And I don't appreciate that. And I would like a reply, preferably at the end of this meeting, during your own poll council. You're intelligent adults, and I don't understand why you can't respond to a citizen's reasonable requests. Please. Thank you.
Who else would like to come forward at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
Chris Miller, 295 Laurel Lane, Pataskola, Ohio, 43062. I don't know exactly how this works, never done it before. But I am here to state my opposition to the attempted takeover of the Woodcliff condominiums. I am an owner in there, recent owner. Done a lot of work to my property, and it has come to my attention that there's ongoing litigation, none of which I nor many of the other recent owner purchasers of these properties was aware of. It was not revealed in the title work searches that were done. The only thing that came up in a title search was the $18,000 lien against the common property, which is an IRS lien. None of this other stuff came up. So, I was at a hearing on Tuesday where your attorney stated that the current newer owners should have known about all this. We did not. I've done a tremendous amount of research into what you're trying to do with this property, and I can see that you've been trying to take it for many, many years. You know, the issues that you're using to try to take this property are not correct. They're...the sewer and water issues, the hookups are...to my understanding, I'm new to this party, okay? I just got here. But to the research I've done, the hookups are legal. And if, even if they're not, even if code today says you can't do one water hookup and one sewer hookup, these properties should be grandfathered. The curb cuts that you're saying on Hamilton Road need to be, concrete should be grandfathered, I would think. Just speaking as a citizen, I'm not a lawyer nor am I a code enforcement person. But this just seems logical to me, having owned properties for many years. My real point is, if this property weren't sitting right in the middle of where you're trying to develop, behind us and on the other side of us, we wouldn't be standing here talking today because you wouldn't be trying to take it. You're simply trying to take the property over to be able to develop it the way that Whitehall wants it developed rather than the way that these homeowners or the way the owners have it currently. Those are my opinions. And like the last speaker, I don't appreciate having my property attempted to be taken from me forcibly at a much lower price than what it's worth. So, I will be at any future meetings. I didn't know about this one until yesterday, literally. I'm not tremendously well-prepared, but I will be much better prepared at the next one with facts and figures to refute what you're trying to do. That's all.
All right, thank you. Who else would like to come forward at this time? Just, you come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alai Gaffaoli. I'm one of the recent owners of Woodcliff condominium.
Address, please.
140 Woodcliff Drive. I own more than one in that environment. And just like the previous person I've just stated, there was no caveat, there was no notice or anything to, for one, you know, anybody that is buying property there at the moment. And so, we just fell into that problem where we, you know, saved up our hand, hard earned money, trying to, you know, live the American dream, trying to do our best, and, you know, bought this property out of our labor and sacrifices that we've made to make life better for ourselves and, you know, everybody around us. And now to find out that the property is going to get taken over. It's okay. I know the city and the, you know, the town has the right to do that, which we don't have anything against. But I think it would be fair to, you know, some of us that have, you know, used all our effort, you know, the money we've earned through true labor, hard work, to acquire this property, to have a fair share, if the city is going to take it. Right now, I think the, you know, all the property there and everybody there is going to get punished for what mistake we didn't make, which I think to me, it's a little bit unfair. And we're just, you know, asking for your indulgence, for your kindness to look into it more objectively. I know some of the properties may be out of code, which is okay. But for those that are not, I'm asking that, you know, maybe we can treat each and every individual there on a case-by-case basis, give us the opportunity to correct anything that you think is wrong. Give us time to do that, especially for the newer people that never knew anything was going on there when we, you know, went in and bought this property. You know, give us time. If there's anything found, let's treat each individual because we don't think it's fair for, you know, us to suffer for the crime that we did not commit, for the mistake that we did not make, for the city to try and take it at the rate which they are taking it, which we think is unfair. So, I think, you know, they need to look at it in a very objective manner, one-on-one basis. If you're out of code, let the city punish those who are out of code. The people that are willing to correct the code, you know, the code violations, let us correct it and move on. And if the city is going to take it, let's have a fair share of, you know, the effort that we've made to make it better, the money we spent to make it better, and all the sufferings that we've gone through to make sure that we have taken care of all the property that we have to make them, you know, up to standard. So, just appealing to your fair, you know, I did not, I just got to know about this meeting, about an hour ago, had to leave work early to come here. If there's any additional information that you guys require, we can work on it and provide it. But I'm just appealing to you to give us a fair hearing and a fair share, so we are not suffering for, you know, mistakes that others have made. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward?
My name is John Freeman. I live in Windout Apartments, but in November 7th of seventeen...
Address, please. Your address, sir.
Address?
Yes.
1178 Fountain Lane Apartment B, Columbus, Ohio. In November 7th of 17, I purchased two duplexes, two units, separate buildings, 141 Woodcliff and 190 Woodcliff. They'd been restored by Serkan Icon, I believe his name is, and they were beautiful buildings. He'd done a wonderful job to restore them. Both units have tenants at this time. And it seemed like a wonderful opportunity to, I retired in 2010 from the depot, D-Fest. It seemed like a wonderful opportunity to have an income stream with the rentals, of course. And I was particularly interested in Woodcliff because it represents to me a kind of unit that's disappearing. And I always loved Whitehall because it also is a kind of community that's disappearing, either being zoned out by people who are promoting Agenda 21 through the acquisition of property and disabling communities. If you're not familiar with Agenda 21, I won't bore you with that right now. But I enjoyed the idea of participating in the community. And I always, I've spoken about you guys very highly, that the opportunity of the future of Whitehall, I believe, was very bright. And that it was providing a kind of community that I wanted to live in. I can name other communities in Columbus that are very wealthy, and no one would ever dare confiscate those properties. I didn't want to live in properties like that. I could name streets and communities, but I won't. I prefer to live here among people that are middle-income people and poor people, people that live in Woodcliff condos or renting from people who, maybe they've had the properties for a long time. I've only been in there, you know, November 7th. I've barely collected three months' rent from my people at this point. My tax burden for the federal taxes this year, because I paid cash for $105,000 for two units, I'm paying $49,000 in federal taxes on the units I paid cash for. And it was perhaps foolish, but I had faith that the income stream would be solid and that everything would be fine. And then, like the first speaker today, a lot of things were not divulged prior to closing by the prior owner. That's a separate matter that I'll address with my lawyer. But I was over there last night cleaning up the front yard, and the kids have a basketball hoop. And they all had good skills, by the way. But they were having a good time and playing in a rewarding way, participating in their, in their world, playing in a, how do you say, a civil way with each other. Nobody was, you know, swearing at anybody or bullying anybody. And this, this is what, this is what poor people do. We occupy ourselves with things that we can afford, which is very little. And largely, single women in there, raising children, under very difficult circumstances, and...
Yeah, about 30 seconds.
They're going to be displaced, and I don't know where they're going to go. We've already seen projects torn down east of the depot on James. We've seen Norton Crossing leveled. God, they were miserable. And now we see another intrusion into the heart of Whitehall. I don't know where you guys want to end up, aside from extreme... I don't know what you intend to, what is your dream for this land? What do you, what do you want out of those lives? What do you want these children of today, who I was playing basketball with yesterday? Where are they going to go to live? And are you going to be prepared to deal with the consequences of high crime and all kinds of problems back in there? That a solid community will help you avoid. And I think you're making a big mistake. I don't know who is, who is the motivator here. I don't know what you intend to do with that land. But right now, if you go there and walk down the street, you'll see a community living under very difficult circumstances, but feeding their children and going to work every day. And I think you're making a big mistake. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward now at this time for poll public? All right, we will move on to our standing committee reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file, and we intend to meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met. We don't have any legislative matters today, but we will be meeting again later, 6:30 next week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Economic Development, Chairperson, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. We have nothing on the agenda. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week in the back about 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Ms. Heck.
Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week, on Tuesday. We had nothing on the agenda, and we'll meet next week on Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week in the back on Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week in the back after 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, those are all the standing committee reports. We'll move on to our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kimnager.
Good evening. I have no report this evening.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Just from the city attorney's office, we would like to report, we had a opiate court meeting today. All the pieces are coming together. We're looking forward to at least initiating or launching that project once we can determine the date, probably within the next 60 to 90 days, I'd imagine. Our next meeting, we anticipate Senator Portman coming out because these are flow-down dollars from federal government through the state, through the county that's administering this grant. And so, he's going to come out just to talk to us and kind of see where we are in this project. So, just wanted to give council and the public an update with respect to that. And then also, just mark your calendars. For May the 17th, the Legal Rams will be doing their, their final project here in Mayor's Court with their mock court program. And we hope that you, as well as you and the public, would come out and be a part of the jury. They are doing a jury trial with respect to a third-degree murder case, so it should be fun. So, just once again, mark your calendars for May the 17th, and I will reiterate that in future, future days. That's all.
All right, thank you. Do you have a time on that, sir? Six?
Probably 6:30.
Thank you. Next, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have no official report other than what you had before you. I would like to ask for favorable consideration on ordinance 6.7 and Resolution 18. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Zach Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up is our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I have no official report.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. We have the Auditor's Expense Report for February 2018, the Auditor's Bank Report for February 2018, and the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position Report for February 2018. We also have the Auditor's Revenue Report for February 2018 and the Division of Fire Overtime Report for February 2018. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have no items on the agenda this evening. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Frymark to please call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
All right, so we will begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. We'll start with our third readings. We have Ordinance 21-2018. It's authorizing the addition of an additional fee for electric service installation.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 21-2018 and move for its adoption.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of Ordinance 21-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 22-2018. It's authorizing modifications to Chapter 1301.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 22-2018 and move for its adoption.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption, introduction, and adoption of Ordinance 22-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-2018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have under third readings. Under second reading, we have Ordinance 24-2018. It's amending 745 titled "Vendors and Solicitors." That is being read by title only. Next up, we have Ordinance 25-2018. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located on East Broad Street parcels number, from apartment District A2 Limited Commerce District and General Commerce District to planned unit development property owned by the city of Whitehall. That's being referred to, it has been referred to the Planning Commission. That was on March 8, and there will also be a public hearing on this piece of legislation on April 3. I don't know. Next, we have Resil...Resolution 15-2018. It's a resolution to adopt a comprehensive development plan that describes the public need for the property known as Woodcliff condominiums and affirming the public need for the property as nuisance abatement and authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city council to make an offer to purchase 317 parcels from the Woodcliff condominium unit owners association. That resolution is being read by title only. It's the last item we have under second readings. Under first reading, we have Ordinance 26-2018. It's making a supplemental appropriation of $44,601.90 from the Tax Increment Financing Fund to various expense accounts in the 279 Fund and authorizing the distribution of the portion of the total service payments attributable to each TIF to the affected vocational district from the Tax Increment Financing Fund in the total amount equal to 100% of the property tax payment the vocational school district would have received of $44,601.90 and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Our next ordinance is 27-2018. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation from the Tax Increment Financing Fund to various expense accounts in the 279 Fund and authorizing the distribution of the portion of the payments attributed to each TIF in the total amount of $9,298.89 to the TIF fees account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 27-2018, move for suspension of the rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 27-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 27-2018.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance 27-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 27-2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 28-2018. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C36 to allow Lighthouse Behavioral Health to operate a medical facility that includes inpatient care services on property located at 4,000 East Main Street, owned by Ohio Nurses Association. That's being read by title only. It's been referred to the Planning Commission for their April 5 meeting, and we will have a public hearing on this piece of legislation on April 17, 2018. Next, we have Ordinance 29-2018. It's authorizing the creation of flexible spending fund appropriating $136,000 from unappropriated monies in the flexible spending fund to the flexi- unappropriated monies in the flexible spending fund to the flexible spending expense account and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next is Resolution 16-2018, resolving to approve, then announce certificates, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 16-2018. Move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Of a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 16-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 16-2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison for adoption of Resolution 16-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 16-2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cantor and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 17-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 17-2018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cantor and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 17-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 17-2018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cantor, second by Ms. Connison for adoption of Resolution 17-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution 17-2018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have on the agenda this evening. We do have our second opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes. However, you cannot address the subject that you addressed in the first poll public.
Gerald Dixon, 3877 Dona Street. Some very good points were made by the other speakers tonight, one of which is people, families. And every time that I've been over to Woodcliff, that's what I see: black, white, more poor than not, but families, enjoying their lives. A lot of people I hear on the internet, Facebook, et cetera, call Woodcliff trash. And I fear that's because the amount of poor, black folks over there. And I find that disgusting. What I see and what I hear from these folks out here is that it is families. And that is what I saw. And that is something that I find this legislative body does not take into account the heart, the feelings for people. Because at the, at the end of the day, the bottom line is, is you represent them. You do not represent the mayor. And so, therefore, your first obligation is to these people you represent. Mr. Rodriguez, Woodcliff is in Ward 1. What kind of explanations, what kind of understandings are you trying to reach with these people you represent? And if you vote yea or nay, don't you think you owe them an explanation of exactly why you did that? Mr. Bailey, Ms. Connison, Mr. Cantor, you represent the entire city. You also represent these people at Woodcliff and not the mayor. If it is her vision, if it is what she is looking to do, that's fine. But you still represent people. And I, as a citizen, expect you to not represent just me, but the other people as well. And when they ask for answers, when they deserve, and you have an obligation to extend those answers, I expect it. And you really owe them. You're leaving people hanging, citizens of Whitehall. It's not okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time? One more time, if there's anyone who would like to come forward for our second opportunity of poll public, you can do so at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mrs. Yetunle Fawole, 53 Woodcliff. My question is, I just want to ask a general question that, of course, you've been, everybody has been talking. Is anybody, is anybody going to give us an answer to what we should be expecting? No? Okay. Because I heard about this just an hour ago. So, how do you communicate with the resident to actually know, I mean, to the owners, to know what is going on? You know, I mean, I don't know if, I mean, I just need an answer. Maybe, I mean, how do you guys communicate with us? You know, the guy over there just, we met at the court last week and he just texted me, something is going on at 7:00. Can you make it? So, how do you communicate with us so that we know what is going on with our investment?
We have no comment at this time. It's in litigation and...
Well, Mr. President, just to this point, there is a, there is a Woodcliff condominium association that you are certainly welcome to get in contact with. There is also a receiver on that property. His name is Mark Frohlich.
Yes, I spoke with him.
So, you are, so, to the extent that you are asking that question on how do you get notice or when do you get notice or who you get notice from, please contact both of those entities and they should be welcoming to answer those questions for you.
Okay. I spoke with Mr. Mark Frohlich, but I was aware that there's no association. I mean, I pay $60 every month, but I don't, they don't have any association. The company that collected the money monthly is BACOS. They said they don't handle it. So, there's no association for that place.
Right. I'm just answering your question and those are the two, those are the two parties that you should contact.
I understand, but I mean, if you can give me the contacts, if you can give me the contact for the association, because to the best of my knowledge, do we have association there?
Do you have a, or kind of, they have the power, we could further control them?
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Last opportunity for someone to participate in poll public. All right, we will move on to Community Day Board. Who has something for Community Day Board?
I absolutely do. Tomorrow, over at the high school at 3:30 in the cafeteria, we will be stuffing the Easter eggs. I have been told that even if there is a snow day, the high school will still be open to us. So, hopefully, we'll see a lot of people there. I've ordered extra candy because some of us seem to have a tendency to eat some while we're doing this.
Where do we answer?
Front doors. Front doors. And then, this Saturday, come rain, come snow, come sleet, we will still have our Easter egg hunt over at John Bishop Park, Ball Diamonds, 10 o'clock sharp, over, being generous here, 10:05.
Ooh.
I know.
Wow.
Join us over at the VFW, 4100 East Main Street for brunch. Kids will eat for free and the adults will be $5.
Who else has something for Community Day?
What time's the brunch?
Eleven.
About 10:30.
About 10:10.
Yeah, 10:10.
Yeah.
Takes us a while to get over there.
Does anyone else have something for Community Day Board? We will move on to Poll Council then, and we'll begin with Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for coming, sharing your thoughts. As far as Woodcliff, Midcliff, as the president indicated and city attorney indicated, due to pending litigation, I don't feel that it's prudent for me to make any comments on that situation. And mayor, the city, stated the city address, that was very exciting. I think was your word you used. I planned to share some other thoughts tonight, but I won't. But I do want to say, I'm really proud of not only our mayor's court, but also the work in the police department, especially as of late. All those forces, safety forces are doing a tremendous job and very proud of what we have here in Whitehall that takes care of the safety and well-being of our citizens. So, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see everyone this evening. Thank you for your comments. And like Mr. Bailey said, it's really something we can't discuss at this time, but I do appreciate your comments nonetheless. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for their participation, those that spoke today. Also, just wanted to recognize and ask for your prayers for the Haddon family who lost their daughter in a tragic accident. Our hearts and our prayers go out to them. Also, we are working, the community and elder advocacy is working on having the executive director of Employment for Seniors at the next meeting in April, April 3rd council meeting. She's gonna talk about a little bit of that. It'll be a good presentation. Please make sure that people come out, 50 and over, and you'll be blessed by the presentation. Also, I'm working with the high schools on the academic trade fair. It was, it's the first of its kind. It's with regards to the job and career readiness for high school students because we recognize that all kids that are graduating from high school either don't want to go to high school, they have other plans, or they just want something else creative to do with their gifts and talents. And we recognize that, and I am working with the principal and the superintendent to make that happen. And that is scheduled for May 15th, and there will be more information forthcoming. But it's the first of its kind. We are very excited about it. It will be held at the Whitehall Yearling High School Ox Gym. So, look forward to more information regarding that. That's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Ms. Connison.
I want to thank you all for coming. I hope to see you tomorrow at the Easter egg stuffing over at the high school. I think that you just heard Lori talk about a lot over there, and as you can see, we do care about people. Woodcliff Midcliff has been in litigation for 11 years. It's been a long time. I think that most of you are aware that when something is in litigation, that we cannot comment on that. So, thank you all again for coming, and we'll see you again next time.
7:45 in the litigation.
All right, so, Mr. Cantor.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. You know, we live in a really, really good community. I've been out for a while and I've had numerous phone calls and cards, and I tried to get back to everybody, and I think I did, and I just wanted to thank everybody. Mr. Bivens, I'm glad you directed them to Mr. Frohlich and the, the association there, and you might get some answers from them. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Have a great evening.
All right. Ms. Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everyone that came out. Thank you for those that spoke. Like everybody else said, we can't speak a whole lot on the matter. However, I did want to remind everybody that next week is spring break for Whitehall City Schools, so expect more kids out than usual. Just wanted to make everybody wear, hopefully, it will be nicer out so the kids can actually enjoy the outside. But I hope everybody has a great night. That is all.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to thank everyone for coming and for their input and their concerns. I would like to welcome Mr. Cantor back. He's been gone for a while with issues, and everyone have a good week.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, I also want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. The weather isn't the nicest that we could have had for a, a lot of people to show up, but we do have some people.